Bartley.
Here.
Resnahan.
Here.
Graney.
Here.
Jordane.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
LeBron Martinez.
Here.
Nisi.
You are looking at that.
Lopez. McGee. McGivern.
Here.
Roman.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tomlin.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
As you know, councilors, we always have the good fortune to recognize a number of really wonderful people, a number of wonderful institutions that we have, as you know, Hoyok has such an amazing history. And one particular company and one particular family has been a real big part of that history here in the city of Hoyok. And that is a great establishment in Highland Hardware and the Craven family. And we're very blessed to have them here this evening. And I'd like to ask Councilor Graney if he would be kind enough to escort as many of them as would like to come up to see us for a presentation that we, on behalf of the city council, would like to make to them. Alright. Right this way, folks. Our guest of honor.
I forgot.
Great. Councilor Graney, if you would be kind enough to come up to read this proclamation that we would like to present to the Cravens and say a few words.
Well, first of all, I'd like to let everybody know that I was educated in the Hoyok Public Schools and I can't read. It's the Hoyok City Council official resolution, be it resolved that the Hoyok City Council extends its congratulations to the Craven family and Highland Hardware Bike Shop in recognition of being an outstanding Hoyok business for 71 years and numerous fundraising events benefiting local charities. I'll say a couple of words, certainly, I go back many, many years, even to Harry's dad who started the business with the Enright family, and it's been a staple on Hamden Street for many, many years. And you can get just about anything you need, you don't need a big box store or anything like that to find all your hardware needs or your bicycle needs or anything like that, right here in Hoyok. And furthermore, for many, many years, when Harry started to save the Hoyok memorabilia and they started to collect things, recognizing Hoyok, he and the Manser Printing Company got together and they started to print a calendar every year. And the money for that calendar goes to local charities such as Kate's Kitchen and Jericho. And this year, I think it was Jericho and different local Hoyok charities. So this is a family who has long-term service to Hoyok, terrific family, wonderful kids, grandkids, that are all involved in the business, and I'd like to let Harry come up and say a few words. He might be more nervous than I am.
Yeah, I'm not used to doing this, for sure. I certainly thank my mom and dad for starting the business right after World War II, when times were tough, in 1946. And I'm proud to be a successor, taking over the business. And I certainly hope that we'll continue into our future generation, which is, David is in the back there, he'd be the number one guy. You know, I thank all our employees over the years, our coworkers, if you will, and certainly, least and not last, all our customers, if we didn't have our customers, we would not be in business. And I love to save the memorabilia from Hoyok. I put it in our calendars every year, all the photos and pictures that are in our calendar every year are from my collection. They're not all original pictures, some are postcards, some are out of old books that are extinct at this point that I've gotten my hands on, and I'm just a caretaker at this point for all that memorabilia. Hoyok has a storied and historic past, and we should all be proud to be part of the city, and thank you very much.
Sure, go ahead, say a few words.
I like my mommy because she runs 1st grade, my daddy works at the gas and electric, he works with his friend Tommy. And I'd just like to say that I have a good family.
I know, I know.
Best speech at the podium, there we go.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Oh! In 30 years! What a wonderful, what a wonderful family, what a wonderful company, so, we wish you many, many more. We have now, back to less fun work, we have the rest of the agenda for the evening, and laid on the table currently is item one. If there's no moves to remove that from the table, we could go right to public comment.
Motion to remove from the table, if not.
That would draw my motion.
Alright. Public comments. We only have one speaker that signed up for public comment, however, we have a tremendous speaker to be that one speaker, and the one, the only, Stephen Tracy, 266 Essex Street. Stephen, please come up to the microphone and let us know what words you'd like to share with us.
But before I read this prepared statement, I just want to say that this is coming from somebody who's part Irish and part French. With that in mind, the matter of the Mar de la Rosa church building may be coming up again as part of the Hoyok Historical and Polish Heritage District. I'd like to point out something regarding the phrase "separation of church and state." That refers to the government not being able to legislate morality. For example, the government should not dictate what commandments to follow or what time mass should be held. In this case, we are talking about property and real estate. Furthermore, the diocese did not want anything to do with Mar de la Rosa. Therefore, the Polish Heritage District, including the Mar de la Rosa church building, should occur. Please vote in favor of the Polish Heritage District when this comes up again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Good to see you again. Communications, item number two. Item number two is a communication from the city clerk, it's our minutes of September 20th. Is there a motion to receive and approve these?
Make a motion to receive and approve the minutes.
Second.
Second, under discussion, Councilor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to make a clarification on the comments that were in the minutes referring to an ordinance relative to panhandling. The reference should have properly been made to state law, it's actually a state law.
Alright, so let's just take a look here, reports of committees.
It was not an error of the minutes, it was, you know, I'm just clarifying my commentary.
Okay, but you're not looking for an amendment to these?
I'm just clarifying that it may have, I believe in my reading of it, the way that I stated it, it came across like it was a city ordinance, because I said it had been on the books for some time, but it's actually a state law.
Okay. So you're now looking to amend these, though, you just want to make that clarification?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Item number three is a communication from Brian Fitzgerald, he is our Board of Health Director, as you know, and he had a communication to us which was included in your packets marked "Item Number Three", and this was regarding feral cats.
Motion received.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second to receive?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number four, item number four is a communication that was received to us also in our packets from our State Representative Vega, as you, this letter regarding changes along Route 141.
Motion to receive and refer to public safety.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the Public Safety Committee, that has been seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number six is, excuse me, item number five is the park and rec minutes of August 23rd.
Motion received.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number six is a communication from the Board of Public Works, it's the minutes of September 11th, 2017.
Motion to receive.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Petitions, petitions. Item number seven, we have a petition from Eric Cassidy, he's seeking a non-conforming use under zoning ordinance 4.7.2 to be located at 301 Linden Street. Um, let's see. He is looking to change this location from a barber shop to a chiropractor and library. So that is the request, and DGNR?
DGNR, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to send item number seven to the DGNR Committee for review. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So moved. President's Report, I really didn't have anything for tonight for President's Report.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilor Roman.
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to take a point of personal privilege to just thank my colleagues who came down to the Taste of South Hoyok Festival. First and foremost, to all of you throughout the day who came down, we kicked off the day with Councilor Leahy, I know Councilor Graney and a few others, LeBron Martinez, Valentine Tomlin, everyone came out, it was a great day, I just wanted to thank the Hoyok community and every one of my colleagues, Councilor Lopez, I don't know what's up with my mic tonight, but I wanted to thank everyone, number one, for that, and number two, I wanted to thank the public and everyone of my colleagues for supporting all of the relief efforts for Puerto Rico. We were able to send out from Western Mass and Nueva over 238 boxes of relief items from Hoyok that have been shipped through Spirit Airlines, so I just wanted to thank the Hoyok and greater Hoyok community for supporting and helping out our family in Puerto Rico, thank you.
Great. And I would like to, at this time, because we did do a moment of silence for Puerto Rico, and, boy, it's just really remarkable how difficult things are there, and I think people are really just starting to get a grasp of how much work is ahead to help rebuild Puerto Rico. But as you know, since our last meeting, we had the tragic events that took place in Las Vegas, I think it would be appropriate for us to have a moment of silence for the 59 people who lost their lives and for the over 500 that were injured, many of whom are also clinging to life at this very hour. Thank you, certainly our best wishes and prayers are with all of them. I saw a couple hands up, Councilor Leahy.
Yeah, very quickly, I was actually going to say the exact same thing Councilor Nelson, or Roman, had said, but about him and the amount of strategic work that he did. And if you guys haven't been down, this is my second year going, the amount of work that he puts in getting everything running with all the volunteers, there's a lot of other volunteers, but I tell you, it's a very well-oiled machine, and it was a great morning, it was a very hot morning, but it was great food, great music, and great friends, so he did a fantastic job.
Great, thank you, Councilor Tomlin.
I'll have to concur, I had a great time down there, and Josie too, also helping out, and all you did for the community, Hispanic community, also for Puerto Rico. But one person you think you failed to mention, Jolton Joe. Jolton Joe McGivern, I don't know if we got a Jolton Joe, but he was right up there on stage, and...
Gone, but not forgotten. Thought I had a dance when you introduced me.
It was a great event, and thanks for putting it together.
That's awesome. Anybody else last minute, oh, our city solicitor. Legal opinions, yes, thank you, thank you for reminding me. Counselors, we try to be a very high-speed, very efficient operation here, and as you know, sometimes we go around certain formalities, but on the other hand, the Law Department is a finite institution in that they, as best as their human ability, they try to answer your concerns, get your opinions, do things for you and things of this nature. However, some of it is getting to be a bit much, and no disrespect to anybody, but I was asked to give a friendly reminder to remind you that requests for legal opinions to the Law Department from counselors comes from, has to come to the body, the body votes to send a legal opinion request to the Law Department. Individual counselors in and of themselves are not allowed to ask for legal opinions of the Law Department. That is actually in the rules, in the charter, that it's the body as an institution asks. So theoretically, I mean, we're a very generous group, if Counselor X wants to ask for a legal opinion on topic X, I have yet to ever see one where we said, "No, you can't get the information you want," but please file an order, ask the body to do that, and we'll get it in the queue, and I know the Law Department will work hard to do it as quickly as they can. But on the other hand, don't just send direct emails to the Law Department saying, "Look up this, look up that, give me an opinion on this and an opinion on that." It's, they have a big, they have a big set of tasks ahead of them already, so, I was just asked to make that friendly reminder and to you, so I thank you for reminding me. Councilor Sullivan.
Yep, thank you. I'd just like to update the body here. Back in January, we did a home rule petition, home rule petition, I guess it is, and regarding the prevailing wage, an exemption for Hoyok for any jobs under $40,000. That got sent down to Boston. I was contacted by Aaron Vega last week, and it went before the Joint Committee on Labor and Workforce Development today. I went down to represent us, appeared before their committee, along with the cities of, towns of Harvard and Chatham, had also filed very similar legislation. I feel it was very warmly received, they asked several questions, they got a good understanding. Now, as, it was very good to see that several other towns and cities are suffering the same problems with trying to get work done on their limited resources. So it is actually moving forward in Boston, and, you know, I think we'll be hearing something very soon that sounded very positive coming out of their committee.
Great, thanks a lot, Councilor Sullivan, we appreciate your testimony on behalf of the body there and speaking and answering the representatives' questions. I had the privilege of doing that previously on a couple different pieces of legislation, it was really cool, yeah. A very, very, very hospitable group up there. Okay, great, anything else before we turn to reports of committees? Okay, moving right along. We have no ordinance, finance, public safety, public service committees for this particular meeting, so we now turn to section 12, which is relative to DGNR. And 12A is the Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom is referred a special permit, application of People's Bank for a drive-through facility under 4.3.25 at 1850 North Hampton Street, which is 1864-1866 North Hampton Street, 12th Courser Street, 14th Courser Street, respectively. That's map 110, block 00, parcels 4, 5, 14, and 13. The committee has considered the same, recommend that the application be approved. It's signed off by all five members of the DGNR Committee. Under discussion, the chairman, Councilor Barley, for a motion.
Yeah, motion to grant the drive-through permit with conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to adopt the committee report to grant the application for a special permit to People's Bank with some conditions, and I assume we have these in writing or these are going to be articulated, the conditions?
Yeah, I'm going to have to articulate them, Kevin.
Okay, very good. So, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, under discussion, Councilor Bartley.
The conditions are three lanes of ATM traffic with a 24-hour drive-through.
Three lanes of ATM?
Yeah, three lanes of 24-hour drive-through.
Three lanes of 24-hour?
A day drive-through.
24-hour? Drive.
Number two is that the, this is maybe a little redundant, we felt, but the applicant comply with all the provisions of site plan review?
Applicant?
All the provisions and conditions imposed on site plan review?
Shall... What's the word I'm looking for?
Shall comply.
Comply, thank you, shall comply.
With all the conditions of site plan review.
Conditions.
And this one, the third one's a little long, but I'm, just, let me read it slowly.
Alright, just a minute, let me prepare. Number three, go ahead.
The permit runs with the land so long as the business of a subsequent owner is in general banking.
So long as the business of a subsequent?
Owner is in general banking, comma, ATM.
Just a minute, is in general banking, comma, ATM.
Comma.
Yep.
Financial services and uses related thereto.
Permit runs with the land so long as the business of a subsequent owner is in general banking, ATM, financial services, and uses related thereto.
Correct, spot on.
Okay, and these were discussed at the committee?
Yeah.
And the committee approved all three of those conditions?
That's right. That's right, so they were before us on the 25th and last night, the 2nd. We had a pretty robust discussion, the, I mean, we had a public hearing, we had members of public speak, four or five members of public addressed us, they were really concerned with getting out of their driveways with cars stacked up on North Hampton Street, and I said that, I took a series of pictures and I said I would discuss that with you, the Ward Six Counselor, after this meeting at some point, we can have a discussion. And the large councils who are present are all aware of what was discussed. And they were concerned about cars kind of blocking the, blocking their view from either getting out of Courser Street or getting out of their driveways, that was, that was a general concern of the abutters that appeared. One other abutter who is on Beach Street was concerned about the lighting coming from the video monitors and from the, above the canopy, and they were, they spoke at the 25th, but he didn't speak last night, and there was the counsel for the applicant talked about how there's going to be a buffering and then with landscaping, that sort of thing, and so they're, and they're going to make sure that the lighting is, doesn't impact the immediate butter on Beach Street. The 24-hour drive-through, we were more than satisfied with their proposal. The site plan review kind of speaks for itself, that's a very comprehensive process, that's in, involves a planning board, and then the last part, they're about running with the land, that's something that I had discussed prior with the department head, and that's kind of language we might want to consider down the road for an ordinance change, because right now, we have special permits. And so here's the example I gave, I mean, what if, I mean, what if People's Bank, and business is 1885, okay, so let's be real about that, but what if they sold the business to CVS? Because CVS made them an offer, an unbelievable offer for that property. CVS, if we don't have this condition imposed, CVS would automatically get the, they wouldn't have to come before the city council, they would get the drive-through permits as a matter of right.
I think it's just the opposite, they would, the permit is to the owner, they're trying to make it continuous to their successors and interest.
The, the, no.
The general rule on special permits, general rule on special permits is it's for that owner.
Well, this ordinance that we have now with 7.1.6 does not speak to that. There are other parts of the ordinance that do speak to that, specific to the owner, this one is silent on that, on that topic.
We've had this come before us, we've had successors that had to come in for a special permit.
This is a brand new ordinance, so it hasn't come before, well, it did come before us with Dunkin' Donuts, and we didn't impose any kind of condition on, on that.
Well, I'll give you the example of special permits we've granted for garage, repair garages. We've had subsequent owners also want to run the repair garage, they had to come to the council for a special permit.
That's true, Mr. President, because that language is in the ordinance, in this case, 7.1.6, that language is not in the ordinance.
Well, we're not going to get into all that, your point is made.
Well, I don't have to get into it, because I mean, I explained it, that's, that's where it stands.
Alright. Go ahead.
That's, end of story, period.
Great, Councilor McGivern had his hand up first.
Thank you, Mr. President, just like to speak in favor of granting the special permit. It's, I think it goes without saying, but the only thing the committee in the hearing was dealing with was the special permit for a drive-through operation for a development that is far bigger. The petitioners were good enough to present us the entire picture of what's planned up there. It does strip site plan review, as Councilor Bartley said. I'd ask that that be included as a special condition for a couple reasons. I think our planning board, with all due respect, don't fully understand the role of city council with this special permit and with their own responsibilities. We are the ones that initiate to allow a drive-through to go anywhere without the vote from us, it cannot go. Any drive-through cannot, cannot be for any property within the city. But they still have to look at the bigger picture, which includes landscaping, the building itself, the drive-through, the egresses, and the, probably a more thorough look at the traffic study which was presented to us. But I think that's a special part of it. The 24/7 was a little bit of a surprise to us, but technology is changing in the banking industry, and what they anticipate is this video banking is going to be so different that each of the windows will have a machine, and you will actually go up during the normal hours, seven to seven possible, and talk to a video teller, not someone in the building, but a live person somewhere else. And when you do that, you can also access the ATM at the same window. So the 24/7 allows this, even though the video will shut off at a normal hour at night, it allows for the ATMs to be open all night, which does make sense. I think they carefully thought out a lot of things, including pedestrian traffic, the drive-through, the crossover, they're going to have to tweak some things on, I believe, on the Beach Street side, and they're going to, as Councilor Bartley pointed out, they're going to tweak some things on North Hampton Street with some of the concerns of the residents themselves. David's, you know, right, and I understand what you're saying, Mr. President, but these special permits are unique in that they are part of our zoning ordinance, and we need specific language in the zoning ordinance to dictate what each special permit does. And the, when a person is investing millions of dollars into a piece of property that is dependent upon one special permit for a drive-through, it's kind of hard to say that they cannot sell that without coming back to the city council. But on the other hand... But on the other hand, councillor Bartley made a good point is, well, we don't want them just selling it to a fast food restaurant or a CVS or something that might fit that particular zoning. But if another bank took over, another bank bought People's Bank out, out, financial institution, I think that's a little bit of a different story. So we tried to make it as comparable, comparable as possible to, to both sides' needs, but recognize that we need to have a say in the future. And I think the language that councillor Bartley added makes us, gives us that, that option down the road.
Councilor Lisi.
Thank you, my question was answered by councillor McGivern. I was just wondering if and why the special permit running with the owner was, or was, whether it was considered and why that was not voted for. But councillor McGivern did a good job of explaining the rationale there.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts, councillor Tullman?
Yeah, I'm just, I want to say I just sat through a few hours of meetings for this, in this committee, and very pleased that People's Bank is, is making a big investment in the community here. But we did hear from a couple of residents, especially people on North Hampton Street and people right next door that spoke last week, and of course, the gentleman on Beach Street, that hopefully with the site plan review, they'll be taken care of as far as parking on North Hampton Street, people getting in on the driveways. And also, the gentleman on Beach Street, hopefully there'll be some kind of a, a barrier which they stated and some shrubbery so, so to keep away, keep the light and the, the noise down for that individual. So, I'm very grateful for people, but we gotta consider the, the neighbors too that live within that area.
Thank you, councillor Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. I received a few phone calls regarding this, and I just wanted to let the people, it's been said a few times tonight, this is just for the drive-through, this has targeted, or this will go through site plan review. So the questions that people were calling on, certainly they'll, they'll get their answers. But the presentation was very thorough, and they gave us a lot more information, quite frankly, than they needed to. One of the things that I was very grateful to hear is the bank is going to be preserving as many items as they can in the interior, and also trying to also keep the facade too. I think it was back in 1875 that a judge built the Yankee Peddler, and they were trying to keep it as, as much as possible to retain the, the flavor of it. And I think that's a fantastic move. They also said they're gonna have a community room as well, so many different groups can utilize that community room. So I, I think it's a great thing what they're doing. As I said, all these details are gonna get worked out in site plan review, but I'm all in favor of passing the special permit. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, great. All right. Clerk call the roll. A yes vote is on adoption of the committee report and to grant the special permit with the articulated three conditions stated by the committee. A no vote is to deny the committee report and deny the special permit.
Bartley?
Yes.
Breslin?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved the special permit for People's Bank. And we're now on to 12B. Item number 12B is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application from Paulo Ferrario for non-conforming structures other than single and two-family structures, to be located at 24 Portland Street, map 78 block zero parcel 48. Recommend that the application be approved. And it looks to be for the reconstruction of a garage at this location. And in order to have a, a meeting of the current zoning regulations regarding this new garage, is there a committee motion?
There's, the motion is to grant a special permit with conditions?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and to approve it with some conditions, those conditions being?
Okay, so we've got four of them, Mr. President.
Okay. Condition one is?
Let's just see, building, and I'll, I'll explain all this after, okay, let me just lay them out. Building must be within the existing footprint, within the boundary lines.
Within the existing?
Footprint. But more particularly within the boundary lines. And applicant is to ensure that by having a survey conducted by a registered land surveyor, Massachusetts registered land surveyor. Can I repeat that, Mr. President?
No, I think I can, I'll read it back to you. Building must be within the existing footprint and current boundary lines. Applicant is to ensure that by having the property surveyed by a registered Massachusetts land surveyor.
Okay, bingo. Building?
Number two?
Correct, building to be same height or less than the one that was demolished. Gabled roof. Number four, building materials to be of consistent or better character than the abutters.
Building materials to be consistent, to be of consistent or better character than abutters.
Correct, so the applicant came before us again on the 25th and then last night and the 2nd. She gave a really excellent presentation both nights. She was a little bit surprised because she, she wasn't aware that the building commissioner had denied, had issued a written denial of her permit. But as per usual, city council to the rescue. So, we reviewed her, her application and her, and her presentation, and it was, it was really, really great. She was really organized. There was nobody present to speak either for or against, so it was a public hearing, but she, she had some video clips of some abutters, she said, but you know, I can't really say whether or not they were abutters. But she, her, her, the presentation was, 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 was spot on. So, we said the permit for the, and, and the issue was non-conform because she, her garage is, it's so close, it doesn't have the appropriate set facts, that the garage is really, I think was a matter of a couple of feet from the abutters' property. But the abutters seemed to be okay with it, and nobody else appeared, so.
Okay. Councillor McGivern?
The reason we issued a non-conforming ordinance is because these structures come under a category of being in existence prior to the zoning law itself. Therefore, they don't qualify for a variance, they don't qualify for a hardship. They actually, rightfully so, if they do it correctly, are allowed to rebuild a structure that fell down or fell apart, damaged, or just needs to be redone. And we just carefully followed the law, which says it can't be detrimental to the neighborhood any more than what existed. We always ask that it's in the same footprint with the same height and the same type of material that's now, now consistent with the neighborhood. And I'm not sure why the, the building inspector denied it originally. I, I think it was partly non-conforming, but we did answer all the questions and were able to come up with something I think the neighborhood will be proud of, and the property owners certainly will be appreciative.
Great, councillor Lisi.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we passed these types of special permits over to the DGR committee a few years ago, and I'm, I'm really happy with the result. These types of conditions are exactly what I think we need to allow our residents to move forward, but to do so in a way that preserves the, the character of the neighborhood. And I think that these are all really smart decisions. I really, in particular, like the, the building materials, the gabled roof, they're actually all great conditions. And, and also having the land surveyed so that we know that we're, you know, working within the existing boundaries. So, kudos to the DGR committee, this is a really great way to move forward, and, and I, I thank you for taking that on.
Everybody did a great job. Councillor Tullman?
Especially Mr. Bartley, really was good doing that, Dave. It was, it was interesting, she came down here twice, you know, last week and then this week, she really was prepared. She gave the video of her neighbors there, and I, and I know the area, I know the neighbors, Beach Street. And she had this, talked to her attorney, she talked to the, the surveyor, the builder, everything, and what she's done to put a building back there that actually fell apart and crumbled on her, her garage is amazing, and, and she was very well-prepared. So, I, it was, it was a pleasure working with her, and hopefully that she will get going with, with the building and, and have a nice garage up there within no time.
Great. Any other thoughts? Hearing done. The vote will be as follows. A yes vote is to approve the committee report with those four conditions as articulated by the committee. A no vote is to deny the committee recommendation, which is to approve and to not grant the special permit. The clerk will call the roll.
Bartley?
Yes.
Breslin?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you've granted the special permit to the homeowner to make those improvements. Next up is item 12C, which is from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred an order that the Office of Planning and Economic Development and representatives from the Historic Commission be invited to present the city's historic preservation plan, update to the DGR committee of the city council. Have considered the same, recommend that the report from Planning, Economic Development, and reps from the Historic Commission be received, and it comes to us by way of all five members of the DGR committee.
So, motion is to receive the City Holy Oaks Historic Preservation Plan.
Okay.
Second?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, a recommendation and rece, which is to receive the historic?
Historic Preservation.
Preservation Plan.
Right.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that?
I did.
Second? And we have a copy of that somewhere?
On our desks.
On our desks.
She's been put on your desks or, and/or, and/or emailed. I asked for it to be on the other, every, every city council. Okay. It's under discussion, Mr. President.
Okay, and could you just touch on, is there any implications by us receiving it other than to take notice of it? Or is there anything we're supposed to do, or we can agree to anything? If you could just touch on those topics.
Yeah, so that's.
Turning it over to councillor Bartley.
Yeah, so we, we want to be careful about that last night. We, this is 100 pages of stuff that we, nobody's read.
Right.
And, I mean, Joe was reading through it last night, and he touched upon a few things, and, you know, I think we're gonna leave it to, hopefully we'll leave it to the committee while we talked about last night, but, you can always watch the tape if you want, but, I mean, some of these, I mean, I, I think this has got to be digested. I think the point was from Marcos and from, there's a new employee there, Debbie Opperman. She's going to be the liaison from Planning, Economic Development to the Historic Commission. So, this is her, her deal, among other, among other jobs that she, that she has. So, the gist of it was as follows, I gave a summary that 19, this is 1991, there's a historic preservation plan, well, this is the update to it here in 2017. He came up with some short, some short-term goals over the next two years, some longer-term goals over the next four years, and some even longer, longer, longer-term goals up to 2025. They include possible new ordinances, including, regarding the demo, demo delay ordinance, possible policies and procedures for the Historic Board. It wasn't clear whether Historic Commissioners even have terms. So, I, I, I guess, so we just took it last night under advisement, that we were not approving this plan by any stretch. We just, we just motioned last night to receive it, and that was it. And, but Marcos did say that this is very much a draft, and if councillors want to make comments, that they would be considered, I guess, is the way he left it. So, I think that's as far as I want to go.
Yeah, I just, I haven't had a chance to read it, so I can't do anything with it. I can't vote anything on it, so I haven't even had a chance to read it yet, so.
That's all we're receiving it. That's all we're doing, is receiving it.
There's no implication by just receiving it?
There, there don't, we, we receive stuff all the time.
All right.
So, that's, that's all we're doing.
Okay, all right, good. Councillor McGivern?
I, I think the key word is draft, it's, it's a working document in process. There are some deadlines in terms of having a preservation plan, but the concept of a preservation plan is long-overdue in this city. And I think that's, that's the key, the positive part about this plan itself is, finally, we have something on, in writing that tells us what's going on out there in terms of historic buildings, historic districts, how they, how they work and what the priorities are in terms of when there's city involvement. The, the one thing I, I noted to Marcos was, you need to involve the private sector a little bit better than they have to get the, the feedback from people who own property that is of historical nature, and to get the feedback, you know, not just from the city council, but from people out there who are, are wondering, what, what does this all mean, you know, to my property itself. Down the road, I think we might have a, a bigger role in this and might be able to eventually see a document that we can all buy into. But at, at this point in time, it's, it's not ready for a final vote by anybody, I don't believe. However, I will note that another good, good observation that came out of this meeting last night is, the Office of Economic and Development is, is taking on the role, the umbrella over the Historic Commission, which they've never really had, a department, they, they've been connected to exteriors, they've been connected to, you know, sometimes part-time people that worked, you know, underneath them. But for the first time, the Office of Economic Development will be their department that they will, that they will work with and, and manage. I think we'll see a lot more productive things come out of it with, with a lot more focus on, on direction where we're going.
Councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, just to expand a little on that, some of the other things they did bring us up to date on was the Victory Theater. We're at, at best, still at least two years out on that. The price has grown, we've only got $5 million so far, and that's in tax credits, which can be sold, which will not net $5 million, they'll net what they net, could be $2 million, could be $4 million. So, it's a long way from the goal, but it.
What about the 20, 20 million?
So, it, that part sounded bleak, but within the next two years also, there, it, it does, having this in place puts us in line for up to $17 million in other grants and funding. So there, it, it isn't a, it's not a dead horse out there. The one thing that the council might want to keep an eye on and think about as we get into some budgeting and some future planning, is some other buildings, there's been no response on at all, like the H.H. Richardson train station. So, if we're gonna save that from demolition and from further deterioration, we should be looking at spending some money, one way or the other, to seal these buildings up and preserve them there. There, they may be something we might want to do with five or 10 years from now, we're gonna have to spend some money now so that they're still there five or 10 years, if we so decide that they are part of a preservation plan. We're gonna have to do something to keep them in that plan.
Councillor Tullman?
Yeah, just briefly, it was a very informative meeting, and I, it's gonna take a while to look at it, I looked at this a little bit last night, but it, it just gave us a sort of a blueprint on what we have out there, what type of buildings that we need to work on, other buildings that, you know, we have to get, as councillor McGivern said, some, some outside money in there, some developers or, you know, because it's important that we have these buildings looked at, and as councillor Sullivan stated, that we gotta sort of seal them up if we're not gonna use them right away, don't have an investment stated that, uh, we gotta sort of seal them up if we're not gonna use them right away. Don't have an investment in them because, uh, down the road, they're just gonna deteriorate and we know what happens when your buildings start to crumble. Um, you know, the city picks up the tab and we don't want that to happen again. So, but it was informative and it's just a, just a draft and, uh, um, there's some really good things in here. And I, I think, uh, we do have quite a historic city and, and buildings here, but we have to work on a plan to try to save them.
Great. Counsel Brezner.
Thank you. Uh, one, one thing that was said that concerns me a little bit and I look forward to having that conversation is that the Economic Development Office is, you know, overseeing, I don't know if that was the exact word, but, you know, working in tandem with the Historic Commission, which I, I don't, or the preservation, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but I just want to remind everybody that certainly economic development is desperately needed in the City of Hoyoke. That's how we lower taxes. That's how we have activity. That's why we have brighter lights. We have streetlights to fix. There's a money issue going on in the City of Hoyoke. So, I think Economic Development's Office needs to be focused on economic development. And I, so I know we all just got this and there was a meeting, but I, I'm very intrigued with, with, with that comment, um, because it's, it's, you know, economic development is crucial, absolutely crucial to the City of Hoyoke and we need to get more of it in that, you know, that, that provides all the money that we need, you know, again, highest business tax rate. We need to fix those problems. So, I'm very interested to see how that, how the historical preservation and the economic development, because basically sometimes they go at odds with each other. One wants to, you know, perhaps remove something, to develop something, and one perhaps just wants to save something to save something. So, I look forward to that conversation.
Counsel Grayney.
Yeah, I'd also like to get a, an accounting of all the funding and the money that's gone into this Victory Theater so far over the years. Certainly there was a lot of money raised by the Arnheimer, uh, people when they had the, uh, the art exhibit down here at West Area Hurst. I'd like to find out where the money is, how much is there and what we need in the future for this thing to go on. This has been going on for maybe twenty years.
Well, the Arm &amp; Hammer exhibit was in nineteen eighty-three. Just so we're all aware of our context of, uh, that was nineteen eighty-three and I believe that money is all gone. And there was a number of questions regarding Greater Hoyoke Inc. and, and all of that. Uh, I, we might have to bring in, uh, for a cameo appearance, Counsel McDermott. I know he has a, a number of opinions on that topic. Uh, Counsel Leahy?
Well, we certainly would like an accounting of what's there and what's gone, what's not there, et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a public service meeting, I believe, uh, the sixteenth. Is that correct, Ryan? And, uh, we're gonna bring the Victory Theater people in to answer some of those questions.
Great.
One day.
I look forward to that meeting. Counsel McGivern.
Unfortunately, Greater Hoyoke Inc. was not part of the city and the Arm &amp; Hammer exhibit did trust them with the money and, you know, someday maybe we'll find out where all of it did go. Um, Counsel Presnahan's point is, is, is a good one and I think I said the same thing when the Economic Development Department was combined with the Planning Departments and, and the importance of recognizing economic development sometime clashes with planning. And, and I guess maybe we, we, we can only learn that sometimes they work together and good things come of it. In this report we received last night, this evening, you, you'll see some examples that, that they're working on is the Armory, which is because of what we lost in the structure of the Armory. They're saving the facade, hoping to, uh, entice someone to develop it with the, uh, facade being historic. The People's Bank project we just, uh, talked about, the drive-through tonight, they're saving the house. You know, not, not the Opera House, not the additions, not the modern part of the Yankee Peller House itself, but the home part. And it's gonna be a community room itself connected to the newer part of which will be closer to the hospital, which will be the, uh, the banking facility itself, some offices in the old house. And, and I think, I think it's, it's a point well taken, but I think sometimes it goes hand in hand. We will see more positive results and more controlled results.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay. All in favor of adopting the committee report and receiving the preservation plan?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Twelve D. Twelve D also is from the Committee on Development and Government Relations and they were referred in order that the DGNR Committee invite in Tim Brennan, who's the Director of the Pioneer Valley Planning Council, to a meeting. Have considered the same, recommend that the order's been complied with, all five members of DGNR.
Oh, a motion to, uh, receive and adopt the committee report.
A motion has been made, a second to receive and adopt the committee report, under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, so this was, uh, I think, I have my notes. Okay. Yeah, we're just, Tim, Tim Brennan, um, Tim Brennan, for, for those of you don't know, is, is kind of a, kind of an icon really in, uh, in planning and, um, he's been with Pioneer Valley Planning Committee, Commission since nineteen seventy-three. He's been the Executive Director since nineteen eighty-one. So, he's pretty well been, pretty, pretty well been around, um, for, for, for a long time and, and has been involved with a lot of, a lot of important issues. So, this is the governmental relations part of, of the committee that, that, well, I don't know if anybody else likes it, but I really like it. So, to, to sort of have other stakeholders come into this, this beautiful building and this beautiful room and to, um, give us a chance to, to learn about them and, and how their work impacts the City of Hoyoke. And, and so, Tim Brennan's, uh, now in a pretty long line of four years of, uh, people coming into this, you know, in, in, into this, into these chambers. So, so Tim gave, gave some background in Pioneer Valley Planning. Um, he mentioned it was started in nineteen sixty-two. The Hoyoke is a charter member. Pioneer Valley Planning kind of deals with, um, advocacy planning, but also advocacy and then does, does a lot of grant writing. Hoyoke has, um, there, there's a board, a public board. Hoyoke has two liaisons, uh, two very distinguished members of the, uh, Planning Board serve on the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. And, and then we, we went over some of the, some of the, the major topics and, and there's just, just a, just a short list. There's six of them here. I just want to, what we touched on were, were the Connecticut River cleanup. That's been a really, a, a long-term goal of, of, uh, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and, and others, especially how it affects, how, how, how Hoyoke impacts it, Tricuybe impacts it, and Springfield impacts it with our combined sewer overflow. And, um, PVPC's been involved in a big way in getting funds to sort of clean up the Connecticut River and, and to bring it, bring it back from what it was when I was a boy to, uh, what is now is more of a usable, um, water, water course. Uh, he talked about passenger rail and we're, we're familiar with, with, with the new rail system. Um, that is a long-term, uh, long-term project for the east-west. So, you hear a lot of politicians talking about the east-west. Okay, that's going nowhere for a long time, as in fifteen years. Okay? There's a lot of big-mouthed politicians talking about how that's gonna, how that's gonna turn, turn everything around. Well, that's great, but they, they can't even get a study. But the northwest, northwest, God, the north-south corridor is, is really coming, coming to fruition. And the state of Connecticut, um, Canada is, are really coming on board as far as fixing up their, their tracks. And so, Tim's of the opinion that we're gonna, you know, right now we have one train a day north, one train a day south. That isn't cutting it and we all know it. And Tim knows it too. I mean, it's, it's almost laughable. But, in two years' time, he's of the opinion that, that we're gonna see multiple trains going north and south on a daily basis. And that could be very exciting. Um, so, I just want to mention that part. Yeah, PVPC was involved with that. Um, Regional Bike Share is, is coming along. That will be, uh, part of Hoyoke's scene, um, starting next spring. And I think, uh, and that'll be, you know, Amherst, Northampton, Springfield. Um, we're gonna have, um, bikes for rents and we're gonna be involved with PVPC of where they're gonna put these for, uh, to be available, probably at the Picnelli Transportation Center but other places. So, that was kind of exciting. Uh, then the three other topics, uh, he touched on, Barnes Act Prefer, uh, PVP, PVTA. And then we, we talked about stormwater permit regs. So, it was, you know, to have somebody of Tim's incredible knowledge before us, he, yeah, and he said he would come back anytime. So, hopefully he can, like the Mass DOT guys have come back twice now. Um, hopefully we'll have him back in the spring. Hopefully Tim can come on an annual basis because he really is a wealth of knowledge and he's a pretty fascinating guy too. So, that was that. Thank you.
Thoughts? Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. I want, I want to thank Counsel Bartley for bringing these, uh, individuals in. And really, it's, uh, an eye-opener. We learn a lot from them. And, um, I mean, I've known Tim for a lot of years and rarely have I sat down and, and asked questions like we did that night, um, you know, for about an hour, hour and a half. It was really, really informative. And I think he did state about the, the north-south rail that we could, when, when things started getting heated up, I think it's that October and November, that we could sort of try to get our people mobilized and, and let people know in the State House or in the federal government that, uh, you know, how much this is important, uh, this knowledge corridor and, and, and the trains going north and south, that, um, maybe they can pick up a train or two. Um, but that's, that's what he said we could do to sort of lobby people to, to talk to them about the, the trains. And, um, you know, it, it was a very informative meeting and I, I'm glad. I'm looking forward to him, you know, next year coming in.
Yeah, Mr. President, one thing he did, he did back up the, his comments with, with, with data and how the, the rail system is one of the highest-used rail sections in the Amtrak network. I mean, you're not gonna beat that, that down-east corridor between Portland and Boston. I mean, you know, you're just not, you can't top that. But, um, but Tim said it's, even with, you know, one lousy train a day, um, it's, it's really getting, getting, um, a lot of, um, a lot of passengers. So, so he's encouraged and he's gonna give us a signal if, if he needs to have us help advocate for, uh, increased rail use. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. President, I hate to do this and we can do it any way you want. Um, but I, it, it was my fault that we didn't, we don't have a, um, an order that we took up on the twenty-fifth, was to declare, uh, one forty-four High Street Surplus. The committee voted to declare it surplus. I'd like to pull it out of committee now, but it's...
Second motion?
Okay.
Didn't make it to...
Yeah, it's my fault. So, uh, yeah.
All right. All right. So, motion to remo-, uh, why don't you give me the item? Uh, Ryan, why don't you retrieve that, please? And then I'll read it and then we can make a motion to remove it. Okay, Counseler Bartley, seconded by Counsel McGivern, make a motion to remove from committee an item to declare, uh, surplus property, uh, one forty-four High Street. All in favor of removing this item from committee?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So, moved? Okay, the item is now before the body. Uh, on an order introduced by Counsel Bartley, order to declare surplus, the Hoyoke City Council, uh, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-B, and the Hoyoke Code of Ordinances Procurement Ordinance, declare the property located at one forty-four High Street a surplus property available for disposition. The property was awarded to the city on June twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen via land court decree with a judgment recorded in the Handing, Count and Registry of Deeds Document Number Two-O-seven-two-seven-eight and Certificate of Title Number One-seven-five-five-two. The property is described in the Hoyoke Assessor's Records as Map Thirteen Block Two Parcel Four, consisting of approximately five thousand four hundred and sixty square feet of building situated on three thousand three hundred and fifty-four square feet of land. The, the property is owned downtown business, has an assessed value of eighty-two thousand four hundred dollars. This was received and referred to the Development and Government Relations Committee back on September fifth and the committee voted for oh to declare it surplus.
So, my motion is to receive, adopt the committee report, declare one forty-five High Street surplus available for disposition.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to, um, receive and adopt this order and to declare, uh, one forty-four surplus property available for disposition. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Under discussion, yeah. First of all, I apologize for not putting this on the, uh, getting this to, um, the clerk and to Ryan. That was my fault. And then, um, so we have Paul Pear and Marcos before us. So, I'm just gonna make a couple of brief, brief points. Um, one, this is a declare it surplus. This is not to dispose of it. This is just to make it available to be disposed of. So, what they decided, um, in O-PED, I apparently, is that they didn't want to sell it via, uh, an auction because they thought they could get more, generate more revenue by selling it, um, through a request for proposal process. So, so there's that. Okay? So, once they do that, put out the RFP, it will have to come back to us. So, we'll have a bidder, right? We'll have a bidder and we'll, and we'll, we'll determine whether or not. Now, remember, we had this before. We had this with One Cabot Street a couple of times. We all recall that. We had One Cabot Street before us for ten thousand dollars, signed up by the, by, uh, by Room One. And this body said, hit the road, come back and do it again. And they came back and did it again and now we sold it to somebody from New Hampshire, from Rochester, for two hundred thousand dollars. So, that, those things do happen. So, it has to come back to us, um, on that one. So, I just want to make sure that we're, we're aware of that because it, it does get confusing. Uh, the other point, um, I raised it. It wasn't really answered. Um, I said to Mr. Marrero, you know, why do we have one property? Why, why don't we have a dozen? Because they're out there. Why don't we have thirty of them? No answer. So, um, I did, the, the answer I, I did receive was this a butts line and terrace? So, so possibly, possibly...
Can you, can you give us a little more guidance as to what building is one forty-four High Street and, uh...
It's north, the last block. It's an art studio.
Bernie Hamel's old art studio and residents above.
So, that's the best way you can strive at, Captain, Mr. President. So, um, so there's, there's that. I, I don't know what the interior motive is to, to just to pull this one out of the jacket, as it were. Um, I, I mean, I'm all for it because, you know, why are we holding onto any property? Why don't we just, just selling them all as quickly as we can? So, but that's what we have to work with and so, the committee wholeheartedly supported this. We just asked, or I asked, and I think the committee agreed, but, uh, that we get a little more, some more, more properties out there to sell to the, get back out on the tech floors.
Didn't Mr. Marrero explain some sort of vision for the property?
No, no vision. No vision explained.
Just totally an open canvas, whatever we can get?
Open canvas. Oh, wow, I like that. Yeah, nice, 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 yeah. Art studio. Yeah, I like that. Um, right. So, you know, no knock on Marcos. Obviously, we all respect him. But in this particular instance, you know, why, why just the one property? Why? Because it's a butts line and terrace? Well, is there somebody interested in the property? Is there somebody specific that, that we're targeting?
Yeah.
Don't know.
Okay. Uh, Counsel, Counsel McGivern had his hand up first.
Uh, there's a few things going on with the property that the city needs to take quick action. Um, the roof has got a hole in it. There's been damage on the inside. And once the roof goes, I think we all know what happens with the property. Counsel Sullivan can explain this a lot better than I can with his, uh, knowledge of, uh, building structure and, and, uh, so forth. But I, I, I think the, um, it's a high-street property, part of the, in the Urban Renewal District. And I, I think Counsel Bartley hit the, uh, the, the one reason that was given to us is it just wasn't going to go at auction the way they would like it because of the condition of the building. They'd like to let the, the mayor has the final, we have the final say, but the mayor has the real negotiating ability to see if we can get someone that will come up with a plan with a reverter that says they're gonna put X amount of property into this. Because it's, it's not only with the new zone, but it was always a residence and art studio at the same time. And that's kind of a unique and plus to have for the downtown, downtown sector.
Counsel Lisi.
Um, I was just going to reference the Urban Renewal District and say, um, it, we, it probably outlined somewhere in the Urban Renewal Plan what types of uses would be suitable for that particular parcel. Um, so I'm actually surprised that, that, that didn't come up in, in the conversation.
Counsel Sullivan.
Um, no, just to expand a little on, uh, what Counsel McGivern said. He's absolutely right. The place is in deplorable condition. Uh, we, the, the reason, the, the good reason here for, um, not going to auction with it though, and, and right now, everybody knows we're just declaring it surplus. But, going to auction, it could go, uh, somebody could bid three thousand dollars, somebody could bid two thousand dollars, whatever. Um, somebody could bid one dollar. But, at the auction process, you'd be stuck going through this. If they do nothing with it, you're stuck with the RFP process. You, you, you can have certain timelines, guidelines, conditions, and they have to follow that schedule or the reverter kicks back in. This, this place, it's shot. So...
Okay. Any other thoughts on this, counselors? Okay. All right. Then, um, the motion is going to be receive and adopt the order as recommended, um, by the committee to us and to declare this property surplus. This is a two-thirds required vote. And of course, we got that clarified at the last meeting, right? So, declare something surplus, two-thirds. To actually sell it is majority. So, this will be a two-thirds vote. So, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to declare one forty-four High Street, which is currently in our inventory of city properties as available, uh, for disposition. A no vote is to not do that.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Grayney?
Yes.
Jordine?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Coleman?
Disbanded?
Hopefully within a two-week period, if it's, if it's possible to get a quorum. Next week, I don't think is a good week. Holiday. I'm sure ordinance is meeting on Tuesday. There's something going on October 11th. I'm not sure exactly what it might be. And Thursday's kind of a bad night for our particular committee. But if we can look at the 16th, if we can't meet on the 16th, then within the next two weeks. There's only two old orders. One, we're waiting for charter language to be able to put it to the full body about elected officials and employees of the city. The other, we're waiting to hear from the retirement board themselves on being identified. And we're not getting a clear answer back from them if they want the city or if the city can do it, so. But there are some new items. One that's deals with the rules, Mr. President, I think you also included that we should look at all the rules before the end of the year. I would ask everybody, if you don't have a good copy or current copy, get one from the city clerk. And if you have any input, let myself or any member of the committee knows. We'll go through the non-controversial ones real quick and change the ones that we have to. I know Counselor Bartley has an item and there's an item in committee that we have to deal with. How do we fix not having a quorum for committees? And I think there's a couple of ideas, but we have to be careful that we make sure that the, the, not just the decorum of the, of the whole process is protected, but that we don't create something that we, we find out later is not the correct way to do it. But I, I'll talk to the committee members after this meeting and I'm not sure if the 16th is available, but perhaps that night. But we'll, we'll, whichever, whichever works for you, we'll, we'll get the next one available.
If Brenna or Ryan, if you guys could send out the current copy of the rules to everybody, who just emailed out. Alright, so we'll figure out the date, but it looks, looking like the 16th. The other thing we would want to mention too is, you know, we have to address this issue of, you know, the council going to 13 members. A discussion, I think we're going to have to have a pretty vigorous discussion about the whole, you know, three-member committees, five-member committees. I think that would be worth a lot of input from a lot of people. So, give that some thought. If you haven't formed an opinion on that, start to form an opinion or ask questions because, you know, I think it's going to be somewhat of a challenge. Already with quorum issues to maintain, you know, with fewer counselors, five-person committees on all these committees. So, something you're going to have to think about. Alright, so looking forward to that, to that meeting. Moving right along, we didn't have any joint committee reports for this particular meeting. So, we're now into motions, orders, and resolutions. First up is item number 15. Item number 15 is an order introduced by Counselor Bartley that city ordinances be amended to prohibit parking during the winter months. That is November through March, for example, at the north corner of Fenton Street where it connects with Homestead Avenue. This would allow for better access for plows and emergency vehicles. It is a constituent request.
Yeah, so I'd like to see this and send it to ordinance.
Second.
Hopefully we can take it for the winter with the cheerleader's permission.
Yep. I have a similar one as this, maybe we can put them the same night. Motion on the floor is to send item number 15 to ordinance. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 16 is introduced by Counselor Bartley. That the city council amended its rules to allow our committee chair to name any city council to sit at the committee table and to have full authority to deliberate and vote. Purpose of this is to ensure our quorum is present. The chair shall have the discretion to name a city council so long as the city counselor is present.
So, charter and rules?
Charter and rules. Any discussion?
Briefly, I had, this, I had a similar order. I wasn't able to attend the committee hearing, but I don't think I was very clear on the order. So, this, when I did it last time, so I'm hopeful that this makes it a little more straightforward. But I just wanted to have the, the chairperson, if just, if there's two people or what, in this case, we need three to have a quorum. Just, you know, if, if, right now, it's just the city council president, the only one allowed to sit at the table. So, this, this allows a little more flexibility and it's the discretion of the, of the chairperson who can, just until somebody, until a regular committee member comes. I just, I want, I didn't write that in there as well, but I should have. So, just to let the meeting get, get going. That's, that's all. And so, when the regular committee member comes, then the substituting member will just go back to the desks and proceed accordingly. So, that's, that's as simple as I can make it as a president. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of referring to charter and rules?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 17, introduced by Counselor Jordane. That all counselors and the mayor report if they've been offered or received any campaign donations in 2017 from anyone connected to the marijuana industry or any proposal or prospective proposal for medical or recreational marijuana in the city of Hoeyoke. This should include anyone who is or has been an attorney or other agent acting on behalf of anyone involved in locating a marijuana facility in any form in the city. Should also include any owner or investor in any such facility. This is, this requested disclosure should be given in writing as a communication to the clerk by noon on October 16th. So, it could appear as a communication at the council's October 20th meeting agenda. Please report the name of the donor or prospective donor, the amount received, and the approximate date received.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor?
Could you add my name to that order?
Sure. And then Counselor Greeny is a co-sponsor. I request that this be received and adopted and I'm not going to explain. Okay, second.
Second.
Alright.
Under discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. So, just briefly to explain this, you know, certain...
And Mr. President, if you're going to be explaining your order, shouldn't you come down from the podium and be a member?
Well, how about this? How about just to suspend the rules to allow me to discuss?
Motion to suspend rules.
Second. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. So, basically what we have here is, as you know, we have pending items regarding marijuana in the city. Whether, what we adopt, how we adopt it, whatever, we're going to figure that all out at some point, hopefully soon. We have a moratorium that's pending. We have all kinds of zoning rules that are going, that are currently pending in the ordinance committee. We've got a lot of active business. So, the question that is presented, which I'm concerned about, is what dollars are either being sent to counselors or to the mayor as campaign donations while you have pending legislation and pending business before the city council related to this item? I'm not really as much concerned about counselors as I am concerned about people for something that is as valuable as this. Sending or requesting or, you know, is there anything we can do to help you out? Is there anything we can do to help out your campaign? That type of stuff while we have a pending item before the council. And that really concerns me. And I would also just remind folks, because I'm assuming nobody has received any of these donations. Because I have on a related topic discussed a very similar item. We'll take out all the names of it. But a couple of years ago, I received a donation from someone who had pending business before the city council. I did not feel comfortable taking that donation. I went to the State Ethics Commission about it to ask for an advisory on it. I was informed, under the rules, you can take the donation. That's OCPF, right? Contribution from somebody, as long as you meet all the rules, up to $1,000. However, if there's pending business before the council, you're required to file an appearance of a, disclosure of an appearance of conflict of interest form. And to date, I'm unaware of anybody filing any such form related in 2017 to anything marijuana. So, apparently, nobody's either gotten any of these. So, I'm sure this isn't an issue. But I'm just kind of interested to know if anybody has received any campaign contributions from anybody who is either operating, prospectively operating, or anything to do with this marijuana issue in the city of Hoeyoke just for this year of donations. Not looking for all the years of yesteryear. We have pending items right now on it. And I think we owe that to our constituents too. You can legally take the money, but I think there should be disclosure so we all know and everybody knows who's getting what and from whom and about when. So, that's the nature of it. I'm asking the same of the mayor to do that. And so, there, there you have it. That's the nature of the request. If you have nothing, then nothing. If you, in fact, matter of fact, this is voluntary. I suppose if you don't want to report, you won't report. There's nothing I can do to force you to. This is simply a request. And if people could put it in for two weeks from now, I'd appreciate it. Counselor Leahy?
Can I just ask a quick, can we, can we maybe set a minimum like a 20, $25 or so?
Sure.
Just for the fact that...
Somebody sent you $5?
No, I just had a recent fundraiser that was, that was nice. And I'm just trying to think if I have to go down, go down the list of, it was a $25 fundraiser.
Yeah.
I don't think I got, you know, much more.
Anything over $25?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, sure.
I hear there's checks going on for $250, $500.
I give you $500.
I have no idea. I'm not a part of it. President is going to give you $500.
Absolutely. I'd have no problem. Anything over $25, yeah.
I'll be expecting it.
Sure. Well, let's make that as an amendment in just a second. Counselor Sullivan?
I'm confused here. I have a form from the city clerk that says we have to disclose all this by the 20th anyways. So, I don't understand.
The 30th, the 30th. But here's the thing is...
But the form has to be in by the 20th, right?
Through the activity through the 20th, reported eight days before the election on the 30th. Here's, here's the thing. One, if people make a donation under $50, it doesn't have to be written in, written disclosure. Number two is, how do I, how does the average citizen know that that person gave you $250 is, you know, I'm Jim, Jim Smith from Atlanta, Georgia, right? We don't know what the connection is to that person and marijuana. Now, if you go over a certain amount supposedly you're supposed to give your employer, but as we know, it could be a shareholder. They could work for, I work for Citibank, but at the same time, I'm also an investor in the guy who wants to put recreational marijuana here. You write, you write their employer down as, I'm, I'm VP at Citibank, right? Well, how do, how does anybody know that that's a connection to marijuana? So, the point is, what I think, what we're, and I think the council needs to seriously consider about in our own ethics rules down the road is, if we're going to have big-ticket items, we addressed this same issue when it came to casinos a couple of years, a number of years ago. There was concerns by some that massive donations would come into the mayor and the council if that ended up happening. And, you know, there's a lot of rules around that type of thing. So, the point is, and there actually is rules in the state law relative to casinos on that topic, to municipal officials. You should take a look at that. We might want to adopt some of that here on marijuana. But that's another subject that I won't be involved in. But this is related to make it very clear who, to your knowledge, is, gave you specific donations related to this and to report that. And it's a voluntary disclosure. Counselor Leacy?
Thanks. So, I wanted to just note that when we file with OCPF, it's all candidates. So, it's not just the city counselors and the mayor. It's potential counselors and mayors. So, I feel like to some degree, the, the order doesn't really capture what we're looking for. And I wonder if there was a way that we could extend it to all candidates because...
Sure. I, I'm not opposed to that. The only thing I would say is candidates are not voting on pending legislation before the city council right now. I mean, we're deliberating on marijuana legislation right now. And the question is the people in this room as well as the mayor.
Sure. And then finally, the other point that I wanted to make was the particular project that you were talking about where several of us had to file the appearance of conflict of interest disclosures.
Yep.
That was because it was a single business, single owner and single project. And this is an entire industry that you're talking about. So, it's just the breadth of what could, I mean, especially when you're including attorneys, agents, owners, investors. I mean, as you're, as you're stating on this OCPF report, even listing the employer may not capture that. I think, you know, I have an online PayPal account. I don't know if I'm actually capturing who all these particular, you know, types of people may be out in the world contributing to, to my campaign. So, I feel like it's an entire industry as opposed to a particular business.
Well, it's people looking to, I think, you know, you're, you're very savvy. You know, it's people that are looking to locate a marijuana facility, as it states here, in the city of Hoeyoke or who are an owner, investor, agent, or attorney for them. We don't have municipal lobbying rules here, at least as it relates to this issue. You know, I think it's pretty obvious what, what it is, isn't. And maybe you have such a plenary of, you know, donations that you don't even know who gives you money. But I, I would say that most people generally know if somebody writes you a check for $250, $500. We're not getting that many of those at this level that, you know, they're so numerous, I don't even know who these people are. You know, Jim Smith from Chicago sends me a donation for $800. You know, what's, what's Jim, why is Jim giving Rebecca Leacy $800 from Chicago, Illinois? I mean, people might want to know that, you know, and that's what the point of this is, is, you know, if he gives you 12 bucks, then, you know, we'll put a $25 minimum on it. But, you know, I think it's something that we should just all be aware of, you know, that, that's all.
Sure. Alright, thanks so much.
Thank you. Counselor McGivern, did you have something?
I did. I lost my train of thought, but I, I, all I know is if Counselor Leahy declares the $500 from Counselor President for marijuana, I want to know what's going on.
I don't know if I can wait to get it.
I, I, I understand it's non-binding volunteer and you clearly made, you know, you made it clear what your intent is of the order. Because the campaign finance laws are extremely strict. More important, the ethics laws are very strict in the state. And I think most of us here are aware of it. I hope all candidates are aware of it too. Because in this, not just in this day and age, but all the time, we have to be careful of who we receive money from. I, I think Counselor Leahy made a good point though, is, is, I'm, I'm trying to go back and think of how to weed out if someone is related to or with someone or attorneys and agents and so forth. And, you know, someone who is a friend of mine came with his wife and bought two tickets, that's right where the campaign finance law is. You know, more than $50 to be able to declare it. And I don't want to inundate the, the city clerk with, with a lot of information that we're already going to do anyways by the 20th because it's going to be part of our reports. I know my campaign is very clear about accepting local money for, for purposes of getting reelected. And I think over the years, you know, Sue Egan has always told me and Brenna says, you know, that my treasurer does a good job with their, with the report itself. And we pride ourselves in that because I think it is important. So, I just don't want to circumvent what is already out there. And, and to make it clear exactly what we're doing, I, I think your point is, is well-taken. But the volunteer part of it is, is kind of questionable. And I, and I think, well, I don't know what I think, but that's my...
Well, I mean, it's voluntary. I mean, the city council can't order a counselor to do something, so we have to make it voluntary. I trust everybody's good judgment that if they, you know, they're going to look at this, if they feel like they want to comply, then they will. If they say, no, I'm not going to do it, then that's your choice. And, you know, that's, that's fine. I'm willing to live with that. You know, it's not a rule that you have to do it, but I think it's a, it's a good government thing. And while we have this, and I just think people are interested in it. And, you know, I've listened to constituents, I hear talk. You know, I'm certainly interested in the topic and so, you know.
So, over $50, okay?
I'll second that.
Sure. $50, okay. Counselor Valentin?
Thank you. So, with all due respect to the maker of the order, when I saw this on our agenda, it seemed redundant to me based on the fact that our treasurers are all doing, you know, the reports that are due, what is it, four days after this? I, speaking for myself...
Ten, ten days.
Ten days. Speaking for myself, my treasurer is based in Franklin County. I did that on purpose so that he would be removed from anything local. And as a state employee, I don't receive the donations directly. They go through him. And I honestly don't have a daily tally of what the donations are, what type of connections anyone has to the marijuana industry when you look at, you know, the list that's been provided in the order about, you know, attorneys and agents and investors. I mean, I, I don't know who's invested or not invested in the marijuana industry. But just also to, to make the point that if, you know, if folks are interested, like you mentioned that, you know, some people are interested, which sounds like, you know, community members or voters, that that is, that this is public information and that folks can review these reports if they are so overwhelmingly concerned about this. It seems redundant to me. It seems that it's, you know, the information's going to be there in a report that is mandatory a couple of days later. It seems like an additional burden on the city clerk and on our treasurers. And to be honest, when, when you made mention about the, you know, not referrals, the donations that come from out of area, I've received donations from people that I've never met because they saw city council meeting. They appreciated how I spoke up about a specific... They appreciated how I spoke up about a specific issue. They're not in my ward or they're not even in the city. They send a check. They support women candidates. They support LGBT candidates. So, I honestly, and I'm being completely honest, um, would not know who is associated to what other than, of course, if we're talking about, you know, the, the, the big names that come across when we are having conversations about who's looking to do business in the city or whatnot. But, um, it seems to me as, as a, a redundant piece at this point. And, um, I, I don't feel it's necessary. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Let me, let me address the redundant part again. I, I think I made the point earlier. First of all, this report will come on October 20th as opposed to October 30th. Number two is, when this is gonna be, again, we trust your judgment, I trust your judgment, that I'm gonna also trust your personal knowledge that you know, again, if somebody makes a donation of greater than $50, I would be highly surprised if, again, we're receiving so many checks from so many people that we have no idea who these people are that are making donations to our campaign. I would be really surprised that you have no idea whatsoever who this person is or why they're giving you a donation to your campaign. I really believe that, in fact, if somebody wrote you a check for $300, you probably know or may call or who knows what, or your treasurer will have some idea as to who this person is. If you don't and you don't think there's any reasonable correlation related to marijuana, then don't disclose them. That's fine. Trust your judgment. This is totally left again to your judgment. But if you know that this person is related to putting a facility here in the city of Hoyok or is lobbying on this issue or is phone calling you on this issue and sends you a check or, hey, can I help your campaign and can we do something for you? I would expect you to report that. That, that's really what it is. And the fact of the matter is, is the, why it's also further not redundant is the fact that when, and again, I've been doing this for a long time, so I'm very familiar with the OCPF rules, very familiar with, uh, what is reported. Donations greater than $200, again, is anything that you say is, uh, what you want to put down for who their employer is, okay? If somebody's retired, retired, but they could be an investor in marijuana facility X, right? If you know that, that would go on this, but it would be reported on your OCPF as retired, self-employed. Uh, I gave the example of VP of Citibank that goes in there. How would any citizen possibly know that person is a shareholder in the marijuana business? So, we're trusting your judgment and the other 14 of us in the room, our judgment to know. What is our personal knowledge? Um, this is, this is very straightforward. This is very, uh, we know basically the people that give us money. And if we don't, we probably should know because you, you should know who is giving you donations to your campaign. Um, and have a sense and be responsible for that, you know? I'm sure if a check came in from, you know, whomever and that was somebody that, whoa, I, I would not want to be associated with that person or I just feel that that is a conflict, then I'm gonna mail that check back. Like in my instance, and I'm not saying, you know, I could have, in that other example I mentioned from a few years ago, my personal decision was based on, I had never received a donation from that person previously. Maybe if I had received, um, a $250 check every election cycle for a period of 10 years, then I would say, you know, I could defend that because even though I'm voting on this person's item in two weeks, I could say this person's always been giving to. I probably still would have sent it back because of the optics of it and I don't need it for the $250 quite frankly. But the point is, um, if somebody all of a sudden has all this pending stuff and says, hey, here's 250, here's $500 or an offer of even that, I, I think that's something that we need to, you know, we should be aware of it. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just basically see this order as a good reminder about the need to file disclosures in regards to things. And I feel confident that we each know in the room whether we have or haven't received donations in that regard. So, I see it more as a friendly reminder that if you did, it needs to be disclosed just like sometimes we all remind each other around conflict of interest matters in terms of needing to abstain from a vote. Because sometimes you can get caught up in, um, the work that we're doing and you're not necessarily considering the other financial relationships you might have. So, I just see it as that. Simple. If you've got it, disclose it. If you didn't, there's nothing to disclose, so.
Counselor Brezner.
Thank you. I, I have a couple of thoughts and I'll try to be as, as brief as possible. Um, you know, our job as city councils is to have orders before us, vote on them, make, make, make actions happen. There was a motion tonight to take this, to take this matter off the table. It was seconded by me and then all of a sudden, I don't know what happened. I looked down and that motion was withdrawn. We need to be acting on these things. We don't need to be tabling them, hiding them, setting up new ways to circumvent an order that has come before us. I mean, tonight alone, we had a special permit for Paulo Ferreira, People's Bank's drive-through. Should we add that to the order? I mean, where does it stop? Where does it stop us not being business friendly? I don't know if this is a power struggle or what it is. The maker of the order himself said he's been here for a very long time. I don't imagine this has ever come up before. I don't remember Walmart, when Walmart was trying to develop, they had a meeting up at the cabin. Home Depot was around. How about folks that want speed bumps on their street? Should we have that reported to us as well? I mean, there's an office that handles this. There's the city clerk that handles this. And then there's a board of ethics that handles this. This is redundant. My recommendation is that we vote on this matter. We take it off the table and we vote on this matter tonight. That's a body that is taking action, not a body that's waiting on this and tabling that. I mean, it, it just doesn't make sense. How about any contributions from pro-life movements or any contributions from the MV Historic Society? I mean, we could go on and on. How about the gas station, A&amp;A Gas Station who wanted to light a new sign on their property? How about that? They had to go through the planning board. So, but where do we stop this? Do we say anybody that goes in front of the planning board for a zone change, anyone that comes before the city council for a special permit? Where does it stop? I mean, we need to be business friendly and no matter, and I wasn't for this initially. When this was on the ballot, I voted against legalizing it. Well, the people that voted us in voted for it. Okay, so now we're obligated to work it out. There's a moratorium, no licenser being issued till July 2018. So, I, I don't know, I don't know how, how this isn't being taken off the table, how we're not making moves in this. What this is, what's happening here is a stall project. And now what they're gonna do is they're gonna think that they're gonna go to a different community. They're gonna take all their business, all the other businesses that the guy goes to get a quart of milk or a pack of cigarettes in the bodegas down the street, they're gonna go to East Hampton, they're gonna go to Westfield, they're gonna go to another community. I'd be interested to know how many other communities are setting this order out there? Is this, is this, are we setting precedent again? Probably, probably sending another powerful message out to every business owner throughout, not only the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but the entire country is like, if you're thinking about Hoyok, even though we have great resources and it's a great valley to live in, hold your horses. I'm, you know, and I, you know, and this is not, this is not, you know, cloak and dagger. I'm against this based on the fact of, where do we stop this? If somebody doesn't want speed bumps in their neighborhood, are we gonna start asking for, hey, did that neighborhood, did they send you any checks? Where are we gonna draw the line? I mean, we already have state agencies, the board of ethics. We have all that already in place. What we should have done tonight is taken it off the table and voted on this matter. We have a full body and we didn't do that. And, and that's just typical, typical city of Hoyok politics. Nothing goes through. Vote it up, vote it down. Let's make a move on this matter. Let's not, you know, set this up and like, I, I just, it's, it's, it's just, it's just disturbing to me that, you know, again, I want to know who got donations from People's Bank for that drive-through. Did any, I mean, that, or Hoyok Hospital or any other agency that's out there. Where do those donations come from? We should, if we're, where do we stop?
Ballot on order.
Do we stop with the marijuana, the, the, the people that want to develop in culture marijuana in our community? Do we stop it there? Well, I mean, there's, I mean, like you said yourself, there's several councils on here that have been here for decades. This is not the first business that has been controversial or questionable. I mean, why wasn't this ever filed before? I mean, I think it's, what the problem is, is that personal opinions and, and beliefs in a, in a system, that's, that's what's guiding us here on this decision. Let's put this vote, take it off the table, have the guts, make a decision. We got an election coming up. If the people don't like the way you vote on this matter, guess what? They won't vote you back in. But let's be, let's do it. Let's be brave. There's 15 of us. I dare you, anyone to take, say, make a motion to take it off the table. I will second it and let's vote on this matter tonight. That's action. That's what we're voted in to do.
All right. Did anybody else want to speak? Cause I'm gonna speak again. Um. Leave of the body to address the council for the third time. So, leave of the body to speak, to address the city council for the third time. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. All right. Lot just thrown out there, lot thrown out there. First of all, I have not been, I've been listening to some of the discussions that have been made by opponents of the moratorium to see how fast we can go through ordinance. Maybe it's not necessary. Everybody says we're gonna work with lightning speed. Some want to get additional information. It's nothing to do with, uh, that, of course, that's total obfuscation, of course, you realize, to the central issue here, which is disclosure of donations. So, I don't know if anybody wants to make a self-report tonight about their donations on this topic. But, um, I think basically this issue speaks for itself. Why, I think it's quite obvious why. Um, I think we all know exactly what is going, uh, what is addressed here in this issue. This is very unique. We haven't seen this type of thing, uh, certainly in the time that I've been here. And, uh, I think the public has a right to know, uh, who's getting what and how it ties back. If I thought OCPF reports had at the end of it, oh, I received something from Mr. Smith from Chicago, Illinois, and, uh, people would know that, oh yeah, well, he happens to be in, in fact, you gotta have a, uh, like the FBI, when they'd have the chart up on the wall and here's the Kappa and he's tied into this one, who's tied into that one, who's tied into this one. Um, unfortunately, the OCPF reports don't do that. So, we're counting on the good judgment of, of folks in the room and the mayor to, to disclose what they've received on a matter of pending item. And since nobody has, to my knowledge, self-reported yet in these appearance forms, that's why this is here. Because normal process on all the other issues is, that is the process. We haven't seen that. So, I'm assuming there's none, right? So, um, that's what made this order necessary and at least in my mind, and I'm interested. Um, and if you don't want to participate or anybody doesn't want to participate, that's fine. That's your choice. That's your fine, that, that's absolutely fine. We're continuing to work our way through the committee on the substantive issue of it. But this speaks to good government and I think anybody who, uh, has no problem disclosing this information would have no problem filling this out. That's my opinion. Uh, we'll see if it's eight people's opinion in a minute. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Yes, Counselor President, by all means.
Please, I want to be, I want to be noticed, Mr. President. I don't want to speak out of, out of line. Again, I think that if there was enough, we, how many times have we tabled an override by the mayor? I mean, if there was enough votes for this override to take place, this order wouldn't be on this, on this, on this. Um, Mr. President, please, this, this order wouldn't be on the agenda. I mean, let, I mean, this is, this is politics 101, really what it comes down to, in my opinion, just my humble opinion. And again, it's not so much the disclosure piece because I have nothing to hide. My problem is, where, where has this been for the 30 years? Where, who, what other town is doing this? What other business are we going to do? If I personally disagree with, I don't know, gas stations, pick, pick anything you want. Tattoo parlors, right? Piercing parlors. Pick anything you want. Okay, am I gonna file an order that says, you know what? I want to know who got a donation from this type of business, their representative, their lawyers? Cause I can guarantee you, there isn't a person in this room who probably has not gotten many checks from attorneys that are representing these types of companies. But that, that's, it doesn't matter now. It matters now because we don't have the votes for that override. That's the bottom line. Again, I encourage, I challenge someone to put, take, put, put it up for a motion. Let's make a move on this tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to weigh in on this? All right, great. All in favor of adopting this and sending it to the counselors as well as to the mayor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
No.
Oh.
Okay, show of hands. Raise your hand if you're in favor of adopting this order. Raise, uh, don't raise your hand if you're not in favor of adopting this order. All right, motion carries. All right. Unfortunately, we have no other colorful items on the board.
It was, uh, my, my, uh, minimum went to, uh, changed from 25 to 50.
Oh, yes. Great point, great point. We never got to that. Motion to reconsider, um, our action on number 17. All in favor?
Aye.
Also moved. Um, motion, $50, cause I believe that was also, okay, great.
Two times 25, over 50.
Over 50. Any donation over 50.
Aim as a state.
Yep. Any donation. Uh, motion by Leahy, seconded by McGivern, any donation over $50. Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Posed? So moved. On adoption as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to suspend the rules and take item one off the table.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to go back to item number one. That will require 10 votes. Uh, since it's a rule suspension to go back, I've already explained why, uh, obviously I, uh, do not support going back to that on the basis that this thing is still working its way through committee, may be unnecessary. And I know a number of, some counselors are still get, trying to seek some additional information. Counselor McGivern.
If I could address it also, Mr. President, because I don't think it has anything to do with the prior order that was on the table other than it's part of the, uh, the marijuana, potential marijuana industry itself. Um, I think we unanimously passed the moratorium if I remember correctly. And the mayor, maybe not.
I believe the vote was, uh, 10 yes, 4 no, and Counselor Brezner was absent. So, you're the only person who hasn't been recorded on one way or the other. I'm just saying, he asked what the vote was.
In, in this chamber, that's kind of unanimous, right?
Pretty close, yeah.
But the point is, we, we did pass the moratorium for our right reasons that most of us believed in a moratorium. The state has a moratorium. I'm not the only one, but I did raise a question which has not been answered yet. And the question isn't about the moratorium. You know, I, I think the manufacturing part, we should have that done before the first of the year and there should be no issue. That's fine. The retail part is important to me about what zones, where the retail's gonna go and how we're gonna control it locally. The state's gonna tell us how they're gonna control it statewide and we have to make that go hand in hand. So, I, I don't want to see the moratorium go away. However, what I was unaware of when we took the original vote, and I brought this to the attention two meetings ago, is the application process on the state level isn't July 1st. The application process is they will start taking applications on April 1st, which means local communities, if they want to be in the hopper, need to be having applicants past the local level to get their application down to the state. And we're not in that position yet. And I, I think it's for, for the people, you know, who voted in favor of, of marijuana, whether it's recreational or medical, I, I think we owe it to them to get our process along further so that applicants can at least, if and when the time comes, applicants can have a fair chance with the state level. Cause we'll have no say on the state level. You know, we're not strong enough. We're in the Western Mass part of the community. I've heard a lot of things. The state is still fine-tuning their law. So, I stated two meetings ago and I'll state it this evening. It's, it's, it's not that I don't want the moratorium to be in place, but until we fine-tune and get the answer on the application process, I will not vote to overturn the mayor's veto. By leaving it on the table, the moratorium stays in place until we can get a little further towards, from point A to point B, to answer the question and to make sure our language, which is the most important thing on the local level, our language is in place. And if, if that's, doesn't clearly states the reasons for why I, I suggest we keep it on the table, so be it. But that's my reason.
Well, and I, and I think the other question to your point is, you know, what is the impact of the moratorium on the April 1st? Is that new information? Uh, we haven't quite gotten an answer. Does that even impact that by Hoyok having a moratorium? Does that prevent somebody from applying at the state level? We don't know the answer to that yet. It's, it's unclear. So, we have to get some more information. So, I'm trying to give it the benefit of the doubt, um, to say, all right, let's take, keep the matter table. It's working its way through and maybe we, and I, you know, obviously I'm earnestly in favor of the moratorium in the interim at least, the temporary one. Um, but nevertheless, you know, I'm willing to listen to reason. So, uh, Counselor Lisi, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to make it clear. I mean, I, I feel like I really laid out all of my points in past meetings, but I had made the offer that we separate the. but I had made the offer that we separate the functions within.
Well, maybe we do that, yeah.
And, and I just want to say, I, I'm not opposed to a moratorium on the recreational retail points.
Yep.
But I don't want to hold off, hold up the process, especially on the production cultivation end, where we can put more mill buildings to use with that type of industry down here. So for me, I, I just feel like it's, it's not about being for or against a moratorium, it's about doing it the right way, in my mind.
Well, yes, exactly, and I, you know, I've, I've listened to your points, I think you made them well. And I think in ordinance, maybe we can bang out the cultivation piece very quickly, and maybe we revisit something on just the retail. You know, I'm, I'm trying to get to compromise, I think by just sidestepping that piece of it for now, working, let the committee work its way through, we're getting to hopefully a resolution. So it's, it's not about, you know, one way or the other. And, you know, we're trying to bring, there's a lot of good points being made by a lot of people. So I think that's it. Did I see another hand up over here, or we all saw Counselor Brezneren?
My, my point in all of this is that it's, it's a business, okay? And I'll give you an example of businesses, okay? Those, those licenses that the Government Relations Committee got, that we got through the state a few years ago, $10,000, it comes back to the city if they sell the business, you know how many people have gotten that licenses? Zero, zero. The business rate in the state of Massachusetts is the highest in the Commonwealth. On top of that, we just gave the business owners and the homeowners a CPA tax. They're struggling, they're struggling, there's no businesses coming to town. And whether they're, you know, and whether you, and again, I voted against this on the, on the ballot, but unfortunately, it was passed by the constituents. And I was voted in by a majority of the constituents. So I mean, it's, this isn't about, to me, it's not about marijuana. It's about a business that's willing to come into, the city of Hoyoke, willing to come in here. And you know what's going to offshoot of that? The guys coming out of work are going to go to all the little restaurants and bars around here, and they're going to spend 20 bucks, and this business is going to make its way through. Because the CPA tax we put on the businesses, that's about a donation that they give to the Hoyoke Youth Baseball League, the Hoyoke Youth Soccer League, the Pioneer Valley Hockey Teams. That, that, we're, we're taking money away from businesses, and nobody wants to come here because of that. If people were dying to come into the city of Hoyoke for businesses, those, those licenses sitting in the Economic Development Office would have been gone a long time ago, and they can't even give them away, let alone sell them for $10,000. Think through, forest through the trees here, folks, we're talking about a business. Whether you morally believe in what they're selling or not, it is a business. That's what we need to focus on. It's going, it has a potential of lowering property taxes, that's how it's done. I'm not a financial wizard like my friend McGee here, but I got to tell you, the way we get property taxes down is if more people are putting money in the pot. And that's just what this is, it's a business. Every other community has the same timeframe as we do to put these, these orders in place. And I know the passionate feelings of two members of the ordinance committee. I mean, and, and I, and I voted the same way you voted at the ballots, I can guarantee you that, absolutely guarantee you that. But unfortunately, we, what, what this is sending the message of is they're, they're going to be like, you know what? I'm not going to take the chance, you know, I'm not going to take the chance. There's a community next door to Hoyoke, that they're not doing a moratorium. So you know what, it's probably a safer, sound investment, because they want to start shopping for buildings, they want to start buying property up, they want to start renovating it, doing all the fire codes and any other codes, handicap accessibility, they want to start getting that on the ground running, because other communities that are not putting a moratorium on this, those companies are already on the ground running. They're going to get the licenses July 1st. They're not going to get anything in Hoyoke if we put this moratorium on there. And again, we're sending another bad message to every single business owner, that we don't care about your tax rate. The Boston Journal gave us the disglorious distinction of having the highest business tax rate in the state of Massachusetts. Do we want to live like that forever, or do we want taxes to go down? We want to see a master plan that's just a fa, it's just, it's fake. There's no, there's no, there's nobody downtown, come down here on a Friday night, drive down here, there's nobody down here. Nobody's getting those licenses to open up restaurants, just not happening. Lo and behold, there has been some activity on Race Street, I'm not saying everywhere, but it's, you know, it's, the, the, the Hoyokes, the downtown of Hoyoke's been like this for years and years and years and years. And now we have somebody that wants to buy a building, a vacant mill, I don't care if he's selling chicken eggs. I'm happy somebody's going to come to the city of Hoyoke and give us taxes.
Counsel Roman?
I just want to make a point, we, we haven't voted to discuss this, we're still on discussion of.
Suspension of the rules to, right, we're not even into the merits of it, so it's just, do we want to suspend the rules to go back and take up this item tonight? That's the question, so Counsel Roman, you'll guide it.
Yeah, so I'm actually encouraging my colleagues to leave this item on the table for the reasons mentioned by Counsel McGivern, and I am a proponent and supporter, and I voted against my colleagues. I wanted this industry to come into this community and state. But for the purposes of Counsel McGivern, and I do applaud Counsel Lisi, I would like to see what the committee comes up with fairly quickly around the cultivation and dispensing side. And for me, even on the state level, I want to see what that application process looks like, because even for the medicinal side, you know, they have to come in with a property in mind. And so the whole point of this process, and what I'd like to encourage my colleagues to see, if we could do the cultivation and dispensing first, separate it out, amend this after the committee that's already doing the work, and I, but I would like to encourage my colleagues to listen to my colleague Counsel McGivern, and leave this on the table, see what the committee comes out with. Because as a ward counselor, who's in the lower wards, yes, even right now with these factory buildings, I want to know which one of these mill factories are going to be opening, which communities and neighborhoods these are going to be in. And similar to the processes around either the biodiesel plant, or all these other companies that are coming into this community, and, you know, I've expressed to these companies that call me and say, hey, we want this building or that building, A, reach out to Marcos, don't call me, B, reach out to the at-large counselors. There is interest and buzz no matter what, but if these companies are buying, like I know there's one company looking at Hoyoke Machine, great, wonderful, but you still have to engage with the community. So I would like to see what the committee's doing, I would encourage my colleagues to leave this item on the table to allow cooler heads to prevail, the committee's already taking it up, and then we can take it up. And I think exactly what Counsel McGivern said, leaving it there, seeing what the committee comes up with. If the body's able to come up with legislation, then we could take this off the table, vote to remove the moratorium. They've worked out the policies from the cultivation side, then we could just do one on the retail shops.
Counsel Lisi, did you want to add a couple things, or?
I mean, I, I really think we should go to a vote, but I will make a point, since I am being recognized, I, I want to make the point loud and clear, that if we do move forward on production cultivation zoning language for recreational use, it kind of makes our entire, you know, moratorium that was passed by this body null and void, because we can't amend the moratorium that's out there. We can only, what we passed is like a full package, the mayor vetoed the full package. Now, we, we could either turn down, or like go, okay, with the, with the full package, we can't amend what's out there.
Well.
That opportunity was, was previously, and we could still, we could still do it now, we can move forward on a moratorium, have the public hearings on recreational retail points alone, and say, we got, we got our bases covered with the production cultivation. But to me, it's like, it, it just makes the entire veto vote like null and void, if we actually do move forward and pass some regulations for the zone, production cultivation.
We'll have to get some further advice regarding the, the pieces of it. Is it, that portion of it is no longer subject to the moratorium versus the retail moratorium piece would still be in place? Because we did put in a provision, or the sooner of when the council adopts legislation. So we did put that provision in, I just wanted to mention that. I do want to get into a quick wrap-up, because, you know, we'd like to get through, I'm going to, Counsel Sullivan, I think you saw your hand up. We had Counsel Vacan, and then Counsel McGivern for the second time, and then I'm going to, we're going to wrap it up if we can. And then Counsel Tomlin wanted to add a couple things, Counsel Sullivan?
You know, I agree with Danny on this, we got to, I don't like the moratorium, because I want to see us, I'm back to what I've said right along. I want to see us move forward at a faster pace. One of the things that I saw come out, and I'm trying, I can't wave my hand on the paperwork, but one of the things that is going to be in the state regs that's coming out from the Control Commission is 20, if you, it's going to be based on the number of liquor licenses, a portion of this, right? And I think Hoyoke has more liquor licenses per capita than any city in the state. And if, if you, if you try to put a regulation in place that's below 20% of the number of liquor licenses you have, to do that, it has to go on the, on the ballot for the voters again. We got to get moving on this, you know? I, I don't know what it is, I don't know if we got 60, 80, 100 liquor licenses out there. So if you can give me any. 65, right?
So that's 13.
That, that's 13 and a half, right? So, you, you know, that's 13, that's 13, that's, that's, that's a minimum, right? That's going to be allowed, 13, right? Stores, so I, I think we got to move faster on this than any moratorium, you know, we got to, we got to get moving on this.
Right. You're all set, I saw Counsel Tomlin's hand up, Counsel Tomlin?
No, I'll just be brief, I, I think we just have to be patient in this, and I agree with Counsel McGivern and Counsel Lisi that we have to look at this, let it work its way through, find out the regulations, and, you know, compromise, you said.
The law, exactly, the law department gave us something today also, on some of the regs, we thank them for that.
I, I think we just have to be, look at this, be patient, and I don't think there's, we, Counsel Brezneren makes some great points. We do have to get these buildings, we do need tax dollars, we need to bring the tax base into the city. But I, I think we should just be patient and let this work its way through.
Thank you, Counsel Vacan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind my colleagues that a week from tonight, the public hearing will be continued on this very matter. And quite frankly, I think all of our time would be better used if my colleagues would show up at the public hearing, get your ideas out there, let's get the thing done, instead of debating here about process for half an hour. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern, you've got the wrap-up.
Wrap it up. I, you know, I agree 100% that this is about business, and that's what I think we all are about, in different forms and different ways that we vote. But I think in the long run, we all recognize the need for economic development, and we recognize the need to, to promote economic development. And, and the way you do it is by making your zoning, making your laws, and making your rules correct in a city that was built by putting industrial commercial zones with residential property within walking distance. That was great 100 years ago, it's not great now. We have to deal with that, we have to mitigate that on a daily basis in every neighborhood in this city. And that's where our controversy comes in, and that's why we are constantly tweaking the zoning laws and making sure that they protect neighborhoods, at the same time promote business. I, I, I understand there's ways to look at everything, I like to promote things and look at it the positive way. The Boston Globe says that we got the highest commercial tax rate in the state, tax rate. You know, I, I mean, I've argued that, I've argued that we have too high of a tax rate for commercial property. What the Boston Globe doesn't say is in Boston, the land that the property, commercial property sits on, is worth more than the building itself, and their tax bills don't even come close to what our tax bills do. And that's the difference of the Globe promoting Boston and pointing a finger at the city of Hoyoke, who has the best gas and electric, best utility rates, canal system, and more water than any other, drinking water than any other community in the Commonwealth. That's how we promote business, to get business in here. We can take care of their needs, we can get them into places, if they look for something that's existing, that tax rate doesn't matter. If they build new, the tax rate does matter. But let's not listen to the Boston Globe, because they're promoting Boston, not us.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor of suspending the rules to take up this tabled item this evening, raise, raise your hand? All opposed? Everybody else? Okay, so moving right along to item 18, which is Counsel Lebron Martinez's item.
Motion to suspend the rules and take 18 and 19 as a package?
Okay, motion to suspend the rules to take up item 18 and 19 as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Posed, so moved, here, let me read them to you. Item number 18 is from Counsel Lebron Martinez, that a proclamation be provided to Steve Lee Blum, hope I'm pronouncing that right, from Neri, jumpstart, for his dedication and mentoring service provided to our youth and community for his years of service. And item number 19 is introduced from Counsel Lebron Martinez, that a proclamation be provided to the Hoyoke Boys and Girls Club for their 125 years of service, in particular to our youth population.
Could I be added on to that, I'm a four member?
Sure, adding Counsel Leahy to item number 19?
Grady.
And Grady?
Kevin could I be added to that also?
Sure, adding Counsel Tomlin?
I think it's pretty safe to say it's all of us.
Counsel Brezneren?
At all.
At all.
And we're also selling tables.
Counsel Lebron Martinez, I assume you want to make a motion to receive and adopt both of these? Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved, 18, 19, adopted. Item number 20. Item number 20 is an order introduced by Counsel Lebron Martinez, that the handy, that a handicap space at 14 Center Street be removed since the individual who requested it does no, no longer needs it, and would help create more parking on the street. Ordinance?
Ordinance, exactly.
Yeah, motion is to send to, item number 20, to ordinance with a copy to the Disabilities Commission. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
21, 22, suspend the rules, take up as a package, send to Finance.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take 21 and 22 as a package, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number 21 is an order introduced by Counsel McGee, that Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A of this, that under those provisions, the city council accept the provisions of the Medal of Honor Monument Grant, and authorize the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that grant. And then item number 222, rather, reads also from Counsel McGee, that the city council invite the city auditor into Finance to get an update on his office. Motion on the floor is to send both of these to Finance, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Under discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Tomlin?
If, could make of the order at number 21, if I could be added on to that?
21.
Working with somebody about the Medal of Honor Monument.
Okay. So adding Counselor Tomlin as a cosponsor to 21. Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Yes, Counsel Grady?
Appropriate for me to ask a question regarding something that's not related to the, but it is related to this.
Yeah, I mean, if it's reasonably relevant.
Yeah, I just.
I mean, don't ask about the weather, yeah.
I've had several people, you know, talk to me regarding the Medal of Honor Stone at McKinsey Stadium, which is outside the ballpark now, it's not in very good view. Is there any way, should I file an order to have that moved so it's in better view for the people to see it?
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just, I just wanted to know what the procedure would be.
Yeah, that would be, that's a good idea. Item number 23 comes to us by way of Counsel McGee, and that is ordered that the DPW patch the raised sidewalks around 3 George and Jefferson.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number 24 is introduced by Counsel McGee, that the DPW Forestry Department cut back the trees and clean up the pathway near Aaron White School, connecting Jefferson Street and Radcliffe Circle.
Can I take up 24 and 25 as a package?
Sure.
Second.
Adding 25, suspending the rules to take 25 as a package, with 24, all in favor? Posed, so moved. Item number 25, introduced by Counsel McGee, order that the GNE install lights along the pathway near Aaron, Aaron White School, connecting Jefferson and Radcliffe.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, and send to DPW and HGNE.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt, refer 24 to the DPW, and sending item number 25 to the GNE, Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, I think they're both good orders, but can I make a motion and send it to Public Safety? I filed this order like 15 years ago or so, a long time ago, and the room filled up here. Some of the neighbors did not want it because of the brightness of the lights, and they made it known. So before I vote on this, I would like to, you know, certainly let the neighbors know.
Are you asking for a copy to Public Safety, or not adopt it and send it to Safety?
Send, send, send it to Public Safety.
You're okay with, okay?
Yeah, all right, I mean, I'll go with the maker of the order, but I just think that, just, just, all right.
So the recommendation now on the floor is to take 24 and 25, refer both to Public Safety?
Just 25.
Just 25? Okay, so adopt 24, and send to DPW, all right? And 25 to Public Safety, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Opposed? So moved. All right. Okay, so twenty-six. Item number twenty-six is, uh, also from Counselor McGee, order that the DPW trim the trees on George Street that are low and over the sidewalks.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-seven is introduced by Counselor McGee, uh, order that the DPW park and rec please develop a plan to better address the trash problem at city parks. See image below, and there's a bunch of trash on the ground. It's a photo of that. An overflowing trash cans.
Can I, um, add an amendment?
Yep.
We also add like, um, a forward slash after trash and put recycling.
Okay. Uh, develop a plan to better address the trash and recycling problem?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Counselor McGee?
Sure.
Okay. Um, friendly amendment to add, address the trash and recycling, um, problem? All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and park and rec. Any discussion?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. President.
Oh, under Counselor McGee.
Yeah, if, I received this from a constituent, um, the barrel was overflowed and it was all over the ground by the park for the kids' play. I'm talking the playscape as well as the park itself. I mean, there was trash everywhere. And then if you went to Lynch School where they're having the football practices, those barrels were overflowed. So there were several pitchers, it's all over the city. It's not just one park.
Yeah.
It wasn't just one day, it was several days it sat there. So they had to come up with some type of plan to address it, to have park and rec go around and at least spot the parks and try and figure it out because this was, you have some of the pitchers up there.
Yeah.
It's, it's time to remember.
Not good. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. If I could with the others, um, if I could be added on to this, um, I would like to. Um, I also think that part of the problem is they don't have recycling bins there, and so these trash cans are getting overfull with items that would probably be going into the recycle bins, and as we all know, the city of Hoyoke makes money on recycling. Um, so that's something that certainly we should do. It's also a constituent request, um, for my neighbor as well. Thank you.
Motion to add, Counselor Leahy is a cosponsor of item twenty-seven. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and park and rec. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number twenty-eight is introduced by Counselor Vacan, order that the council amend Section eighteen dash thirty-five subsection D two B one to correct a drafting error included in the council's June sixth, two thousand seventeen adopted revision of said section.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yes, receive and refer to ordinance, but I just want to briefly say, we already have it in legal form, and it was just language that was inadvertently left in. We had created other language to address the matter, and so it's now somewhat contradictory.
Okay. What ordinance is that on?
Um, it's on the vacant properties. We had added language so that if somebody was away or it was a temporary-
No need to go into details, just kind of curious.
Yeah, but, and the waiting a year part was to be eliminated, but it was inadvertently left in.
Okay, so we'll get that-
It's cleanup.
We'll get that clerical issue fixed up. Motion on the floor is to send twenty-eight to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Um, we have one, two, two late-file orders.
Motion not to adjourn.
Late File A, introduced by Counselor McGee, ordered that the DGNR Committee invite in the Mass DOT representatives to get info and address constituent questions on the one forty-one project. Um, I'd also like to, friendly amendment if I may, to address the issue of lightage on the on-ramps, um, generally. I've been trying to work with the State Senator's Office to just, how about shields? So they don't flood the whole neighborhoods with light. And we do this for, you know, your Joe Convenience Store, and we're like all over them in site plan review. Our own State Highway Department just floods whole neighborhoods full of light, and, um, I'd like to just, as part of that, I'll, I'll be happy to come to that meeting, and it's just taking forever to even, we have to study this, and we have to study that. It's just incredible. So, um, add, uh, friendly amendment to add language which says, um, and address, um, lighting on the on-ramps. Okay? All in favor of that friendly amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Under discussion, Counselor McGee? Uh, we'd have to suspend the rules to have a discussion because under the rules-
It's not a discussion, it's just to tell why the order was late.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
And that's since I, I talked with, uh, State Rep Vega on this matter, they had a so-called meeting on the one forty-one. It really, no notice was given to, to myself, it was put in the paper. Um, this is the same group that came to DGNR, Counsel Bartley, had a great meeting, we talked about the bridges, they talked about lights and a street light, or traffic lights going up by Hampden Street. They gave us a breakdown of all the projects that were going on over the next five to ten years. This was never in that discussion.
Correct.
And they sat right over there where they were, Counsel Bartley was here, they never brought this up, and then out of the blue, we're gonna do this to one forty-one. Put a notice in the paper, no notice to me, and I got noticed when I was actually going to someone's event. Someone grabbed me, I said, why aren't you at this? I'm like, no one ever told me.
Yeah.
So that's how they work. They had their chance here, they chose not to give it, so now we're gonna bring them in to allow the public to ask them questions, that's what they're trying to do, which is a four-lane, or, or four lanes are gonna open up one forty-one somehow? I, it's, just what I'm hearing, i- i- it's out there, but we're gonna allow the public to have a chance to speak. That's why I filed it, I just got it-
Could I be added as a cosponsor?
A little over that twelve o'clock timeframe.
Yeah, adding Counselor Jordane, Tomlin, Grainey, Brezner, Leahy.
Thank you.
McGivern.
Sullivan.
Sullivan.
Everybody.
Everybody.
Locals. Sullivan. Uh, as all his cosponsors. And motion on the floor is to send to DGNR. Do you have just a process point? Because we can't get into the merits of it, but-
Another amendment?
Uh, we can't amend it unless we're gonna take final action on it tonight, sorry. We, we can add cosponsors, I'll let, I got you on there for that, though. All right. Because this is a late file, so we'd have to suspend the rules to have discussion tonight.
I thought we just did an amendment, didn't we?
Yeah. We just amended it, yeah. Can we do it again?
That was a friendly amendment.
Let's just, let's just, just to get our technicalities right. Motion to suspend the rules to allow discussion and amendments on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, we amended it to add lighting, and what's your amendment?
To add further discussion on the Lyman Street Bridge. I've already had two requests from BJ's Package Store and Garbalinsky's, hearing all kinds of stories, rumors.
I think we just got an email on that.
Yeah, we did. Take a picture of it before and after or something?
Before and after, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I did, I, I sent it to you.
I got it from Mass DOT. I sent it to you.
Oh, you got it.
That's, that's how you got it, I asked a question. Mr. President?
Okay, and adding, uh, discussion of Lyman, so we've got, at least mine's related to one forty-one, though, because it's the on-ramp seventeen A and B, um, but, um, the lighting from the on-ramps and, um, and then also discussion of Lyman Street Bridge. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
So moved. Counsel Bartley?
That's all sounds great, but it, that's also gonna be, all is gonna be provided to me in writing? Because I, I-
He did.
I wrote, yeah, the clerks got it, and I have it wrote it, written on the order form. Those amendments.
So you, you can forward the, would you forward that to me, Ben? I'll just forward that to-
Yeah. Plus, if I get an invite to the meeting, I'll open my big mouth. I have a lot of opinions on these topics.
If you get an invite?
You get an invite?
What, what, what kind of an invite would you like?
Everybody gets the notice.
What would you like for an invite?
Personal call.
Sure. I got it.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, okay, so any other discuss, Counsel McGivern?
No discussion, just, I know you read it, but does that include the state delegation with the DOT reps?
No.
Doesn't yet.
I, I think that's important.
Okay, add, I think, I think that is a good add.
Yes.
Um, so invite in Mass DOT reps and state delegation. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And Counselor Tomlin, you had something?
We still discussing, just briefly.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, thanks to Counsel Brezner, and I believe that contacted our State Rep Vega, that, that whole neighborhood up there that's being affected, a big part of the neighborhood is, uh, did get noticed, um, and a lot of people up there did get letters and sent them to the state, um, with their comments on that area, but I, I, they're, they do want to know, um, have another meeting hopefully and be notified, because one person up in that neighborhood actually went because they saw a small, tiny little ad in the paper, um, about the meeting, so, um, they're all well aware of what's going on up there, and, and I'm sure the whole neighborhood would be down here for that meeting.
Great. All in favor of referring as amended to DGNR? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late File B, introduced by Counsel McGee, order that the ordinance committee invite in the DPW to address and potentially correct the monthly parking pass issues in the parking decks in relation to the visitors' parking needed for Volleyball Hall of Fame, Children's Museum, et cetera. Ordinance?
Ordinance, yeah.
Adding Counselor Leahy as a cosponsor. All in favor referring to-
Can I just make a friendly amendment to that, please?
You'd have to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, uh, to take up, uh, actions including amendments and discussion.